Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the East Brandon Wyandt Township Board of Supervisors PM meeting for Thursday, September 19th. Just a reminding, reminder, a recording device will be used during the meeting. We're going to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start with public comment for agenda items. Do we have any before I get started? Seeing none, we're going to move on to conditional use hearing for Three Creeks LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the continuing hearing on the application of Three Creeks LLC for their property located at 2069 Bonsville Road for proposed townhouse traditional neighborhood development. Hearing was last convened on August 15th and continued on the record until this evening, September 19th. The applicant has again requested a continuance and is requesting a continuance until December 19th, 2024. The applicant has indicated that this will be the last request for a continuance and they will be ready to proceed in December. Her motion to continue the hearing until December 19th, 2024?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The hearings then continue to that date, Thursday, December 19th, 2024, after the Board of Supervisors' public meeting. Advertisement, opposing, and moving.
Thank you. All right, so the approval of previous meeting minutes? The approval for the September 5th, 2024 Board Supervisor Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the September 5th Board Supervisors' meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over. We all have looked at the treasurer's report. I don't think anybody has any questions on that.
I got mine answered already, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report and authorize to pay the bills and approve the payroll.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to turn it over, Luke, for the Township Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. All items I'd like to address with the board this evening are agenda items later in the meeting, so I have no additional report.
Okay. We don't need to bill any Inspectorary Township Roadmaster?
Thank you. We continue to work with Panoni to obtain DEP approval for the well pumping system for the new restrooms at the community park. Due to the restrooms having a drinking fountain, we are required to complete forms and obtain a non-community water system permit. Going forward, this permit requires monthly testing for coliform and quarterly tests for nitrates and nitra- yeah, both of those. Once we have the permit approved, the restrooms will be open for business. The Phase Two restrooms, we received a violation from DEP after a recent inspection by one of their inspectors. They had removed a faulty water softener, which we found out we are not permitted to do according to DEP. We are working with DEP to resolve the violation to bring us back into compliance. The department personnel attended chipper safety training at the September 18th Del Chester meeting. The training was sponsored by Stevenson Equipment. Training included a safety video and demonstration of safe operations in the field. The department will be attending flagger training next Thursday, who were required to be certified every three years in order to direct traffic on roads open to the public. The department continues to trim trees throughout the township. They've also been removing brush and high grass along the road edges. This will make it easier to maintain in the future and also improve site distance at corner properties. We've also been trimming some intersections to improve that site distance. We continue to work with Cedarville Engineer for the replacement of old horseshoe pipe culvert number tears to the lower bridge at Bonsville Mill. FEMA is completing a wetland study for Bonsville Mill prior to releasing funding for the project. I've asked Cedarville to provide an updated proposal for the replacement of the old horseshoe pipe culvert. Lastly, I would like to thank Derek Kloss, Road Department Foreman, for completing the installation of four new AED cabinets at our community park and Spatola Park. Cabinets are equipped with a cooling fan, a heater, that will permit the AED to remain in the parks year-round. The installation required some special wiring, fastening breakers, electrical conduit and junction boxes. This is one item in the park that we hope never has to be used, but if needed, it will be there. And I thank Derek for a job well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Chief.
Good evening. The police report for August 2024, the department recorded 2,294 events. We completed 203 investigations. We had 11 criminal arrests, three summary arrests, four warrant arrests, and five juvenile petitions. Investigated 15 traffic accidents, issued 147 traffic citations, 70 traffic killings. Officers logged 9,032 miles of patrol. One had any training for this past month. We had no correspondence. And you have copies of the monthly investigations.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to the Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. For the month, we had 57 total incidents, 32 fire, 25 medical. In East Brandon Wyandt Township, we had 16 fire calls, 11 medical calls. We had three training with the average of 25 personnel in attendance. Also, we had 10 personnel in attendance per fire call. The month of October is approaching, and it is fire prevention month. We have 16 total requests for Fire Department participation. In East Brandon Wyandt Township, we have the Fall Fest that the Fire Department will be attending. We are excited to once again have our open house at the Firehouse on October 16th. Days later, we'll be up at the elementary school as they have their Home and School Association bonfire. So it will be a busy month for the Fire Department in regards to calls for service. Also, I believe in the supervisor's package is with sorrow, but with aspirations of continuing in a different field that I would tender my resignation as Fire Marshal to East Brandon Wyandt Township. First, I think I shared with many of the board members that put my hat into the political arena next. He said. He included Fire Chiefs down there, so. Thank you for all the time you gave me as Fire Marshal and let me sit in on you.
No, thank you. You were fantastic to have me. And I guess the board will sit down and try and figure this out and get back to you and go from there. All right, perfect. Thank you very much. Luke, a technical question, but how, what's the, what's the time limit on second class for, for Fire Marshal?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I'll have to look into it and get back to you.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry to throw it on the floor.
That or make up an answer is basically your two options. I can make something up, or I can look it up and get you the correct answer.
I don't know the answer either.
Yeah, but I just figured we should cover bases and sooner rather than later. All right, do we have the Minquist report?
Minquist contacted me, and they are at a function that they won't be able to come present tonight.
No problem. Thank you. Okay, we're going to turn it over to Old Business and Jim, if you want to step up? This is for the Bonsville Mill Strategic Plan Discussion.
Organizer, Eric.
Last month, we presented our strategic plan for Bonsville Mill Park looking forward for the next five years. And I believe that we need more time to have a conversation in the room with, with, with all of you so we can have a dynamic conversation. At, at the close of last month's meeting, we weren't sure that we would have the time to do that and prepare our, our budget request for our October 1st meeting with the Budget Committee. So Luke interviewed each of you and, and put together a memorandum digesting all of your input to him with regard to a response to our strategic plan. I think it's an excellent memo. At the, at the very least, it puts together all the information in a format that I think we can use for tonight's discussion. So I'd like to talk through the memorandum, identifying the issues that I think need a little bit further discussion. On the first page of the memorandum, there are three bullets that Luke has presented as guidance, principles that were used to guide the decisions later in the memorandum. And the first of those bullets has to do with sustainability of the park and your concerns with regard to that. The maintenance costs for the buildings are not expected to be high. Note that there has been no maintenance cost for Building A since its completion over seven years ago. This building was completed using quality materials and woods that will hold up well. The exterior is masonry with hardwood used for the soffits, windows, doors, and trim treatment. And the roof is a wood shingle roof, which has a life expectancy of lasting 80 years. So you're, you're looking at very little attention needed for these buildings. That notwithstanding, the difference in maintaining Building C completed for occupancy relative to just closing up the exterior of the building is small. Most of the exterior work is complete with maintenance need, needs for it expected not to be significant, similar to, to Building A. The volunteer corps is currently strong and has potential to continue through the completion of the building work, but curtailing the vision that they have worked towards will significantly dampen the enthusiasm that has sustained it to, to date. The direction you have provided in your memorandum run counter to addressing your concerns about sustainability of the volunteer corps. They've communicated to me they will stick it out and do what needs to be done, but they're, they are very disappointed in that the investment of their time has, may not be realized. They've put a lot of time into working on Building C towards occupancy. They've, they've installed a heating system. We installed a significant amount of insulation for the buildings. And the township has also made significant investment that has not been realized yet, and that is the purchase of the flooring for the, for the mill, for the Building C has been done. Purchasing of, purchasing of the exterior materials for the ramp that would be needed for an entrance to the north side of the building has been done. They have been sitting in storage. That's work that could have been done this year, but Luke specifically directed us not to do any interior work or to finish the north side of Building C for access, and we, we abided to that direction. So they're, they're very, they're very disappointed that a significant amount of their efforts may not be realized. You know, we were thanking them, but at the same time, we're almost saying, well, you didn't really need to do that. Regarding the financial stability or sustainability, we, we are truly at a watershed moment with regard to that aspect of the park as well. With the opening of the Culp Garden and the associated parking lot, a large area that has been restricted to the public will, will have opened up. And the final layout of the park can finally be realized, and we can start to actively run our donation programs. And, and there's the opportunity there. With the attention that's been developed to date and the development of an active donation program, we are on the verge of realizing the potential for independent sustainability of the park once the development is complete. And that's what, what I'm saying is, once the buildings are complete, we're, we're looking to be sustainable for support of garden maintenance and any building maintenance that's, that's required, although, as I mentioned, I don't expect that to be significant. So restricting the operations at the park now is, is bad timing for that. We, we want to show the enthusiasm that the township has for this park and the support that it has to, to solicit those donations, the enthusiasm for donations. Investment of the park weighed against other important township services, second bullet. Completely agree. You know, I personally have a comprehensive understanding of the township, and I understand how it fits into the big picture. You know, I've, I've given significant time to the township over the last 20 years, starting out with the Historical Commission, with Bonsville Mill being a very close second. I've been involved with Bonsville Mill through the development of the R2 Master Plan, and I've acted as its chair since 2015. I understand the complete timeline of this project. I understand the support that we've, that we've gotten and the arguments we've had to make in the past to, to obtain that support, but I'm completely familiar with that. I've been on the Planning Commission since 2015. That's almost 10 years, and I've had a significant role, lead role in the preparation of the township's comprehensive plan update in 2022. And note that the, the plan strongly support, is strongly supported in the, the park is strongly supported in the plan. Additionally, I've participated in discussions of the Budget Committee for several years, and I understand the priorities that it has and the difficulties that they have in recommending a budget each year. So I completely understand the township as a whole. I understand how, how the park fits into that, and I completely agree that the township has other priorities that they need to, to take over support of the park. Completely on board with that. And I want you to understand that my views with regard to Bonsville Mill Park are not parochial. I understand township as a whole and, and the support that the, the township has from the community. I, I can't tell you one person I've spoken to that has had a negative thing to say about the, the park. Maintaining the vision presented in the strategic plan does not necessarily require a commitment of the township funding for further development. So it's understood that other priorities need to be met before considering the needs of the park, but I think we can still have a vision without necessarily committing township to financially supporting it. And that leaves room for us to find other ways of getting it done, whether it's volunteerism, whether it's donations, whether it's grant funding. We spent a lot of time trying to obtain a determination of eligibility for listing on the National Register for, for Bonsville. We finally got that. We finally have access to the Keystone Grants, and that is something that could be used to support the vision. So I would like to separate the vision for what we would like to do with the park from a commitment of financial support for the park. I'd also like to point out the cost of developing Bonsville Mill Park is a fraction of that spent on development of the community park. There's a lot of money spent on that relative to that. Bonsville Mill Park has been inexpensive, relatively speaking, and that it has been a small part of the annual budget as a whole. Third bullet is outright admission of some proposed amenities. Volunteers welcome an inclusive vision with the understanding that further, further understanding of the needs to reach, it may result in a decision not to continue in the future. So that, that goes back to the vision thing. Let's, let's maintain the vision, and as we get into it, if we can't find funding or there's a desire for the township not to do something, that, that, that could be the, the decision in the end. Building C. There were several options for Building C in the R2 Plan, including rehabilitation. Initially, rehabilitation was not considered realistic due to its cost estimated based on contract work in the R2 Plan. However, with the involvement of Rocky and the development of the current construction crew, the model of almost all labor being done by volunteers was developed. This allowed rehabilitation work for Building C and Building A to proceed at a cost an order of magnitude below the estimates provided in the R2 Plan. So the, the fact that Rocky, with his experience and knowledge and connection to the wood industry and the development of a team that understands that type of rehabilitation work coming on board, we have accomplished a lot for a relatively small amount of money. Otherwise, we wouldn't have gone down the rehabilitation option. There were three options presented in the R2 Plan. Rehabilitation was the, the most significant option. So work on Building C has proceeded on the rehabilitation track until this past year, when the volunteers were directed to focus work on closing up the building. A few things of note. Volunteers have already invested significant amounts of time, including material donations towards rehabilitation that allows occupancy. That is beyond the basic structural components. The township has already made significant investments in materials towards meeting occupancy. The approved purchases included installation of a hot water heating system, installation of insulation, purchase of flooring material and storage for years, and purchase of materials to finish the north side of the exterior entrance area. It is recommended that the township finish the exterior of Building C in a way that allows future use of the building and allow installation of the flooring rather than having it continue to sit in storage, noting that the cost of doing this to the township is almost nothing. The purchase has already been made, the labor is free. To finish this area in a way that does not allow the potential use of the building is a waste of time and money. To close up the north side of the building and then go back later and redo that building to provide access for occupancy is a waste of money. Why not just finish it once and allow for the potential of future use, whether that's decided or not? Also, access to the second floor of Building C from the north side would facilitate the volunteers' use of that space. So right now, it's difficult to access that space. They, they're going up through the stair tower. To, to have an entrance on the north side of the building off of the trail there will facilitate the storage of materials within the building. This is not occupancy. This is just use of the space by, by the volunteers. It's recommended that the vision of potentially obtaining occupancy for public use be maintained with the completion of that vision based on the realized need for use. So again, let's keep the vision. Let's assess the use. If the use is determined to be needed, then we can complete the details of the interior work. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking for the next year to allow the installation of the flooring, complete the, the north side of Building C for, for occupancy, and that, that would be a focus of that, and then the interior of Building A for, for next year. Note also that the occupancy for Building A is currently limited to 20 people with a docent from the township. So we don't, because it only has one entrance, it doesn't have A3 occupancy. We're, we're limited to the number of people that we can allow use of the building. With regard to storage of public records, a fire suppression system, if activated, would likely do as much damage to the documents as a fire would. So I don't understand personally the requirements of a fire suppression system. I will say that, as I mentioned last month, or last, last meeting, that Rocky has worked very closely with Matt Smellman, the codes officer with the township, and a fire suppression system was never brought into the conversation.
To hit that, I don't think, I think there was a little bit, Luke, can you confirm?
Well, let me, let's, let's answer the bit about fire suppression first.
Yep.
Just because it is a commercial occupancy doesn't necessarily mean that fire suppression would be ready or be required. Other limitations such as at-grade access or total square footage dictate whether fire suppression is necessary. So I think it is, without having a full plan, in, yes, probable that fire suppression is not necessary to occupy that space.
I just wanted to-
Okay, I appreciate that. I would be surprised if it was a potential need that Matt wouldn't have brought that up.
Matt, Matt Smellman had indicated he hadn't been there since 2021. Is that correct?
Well, we haven't done much work on the buildings since then. We, we, this, this, the flooring and, and the, the wood to finish the north side of the building has been sitting in storage. The, the construction crew's attention was redirected from building work to supporting the development of the Culp Garden in front of the buildings. They did a significant, well, they did all the labor for Phase Two of, of that garden project, and that was significant. They installed the amended soils that were delivered to the site. They installed the hardscape and, and trails. They installed the, the water system. They oversaw the drilling of the well for the water system. They, they oversaw the installation of the electric for supply for, for the, for the park and for the garden. There's, all of their time really was redirected from the building work to the garden, therefore I'm not surprised that Matt hasn't been out there for several years.
Well, just keep that in the back of your head, you know, because again, we can't go backwards. So, so keep that in mind. If Matt were to go in there tomorrow and say, this will have to get, then that's going to be a problem.
Right. I, I understand, and that's exactly why Rocky has been working with Matt, because we don't want to go backwards. We want to do things in a way that's consistent towards a meeting the A3 occupancy, whether that's decided.
I don't know whether you need fire suppression or not, but if you need fire suppression, I, I'm not familiar with any fire suppression system that can use a well. Can't generate enough.
Well, and our, I, I can tell you our well will not generate enough.
Pardon me?
I can tell you that our well does not have the yield-
No well, unless you got it, unless you've got a 500 or 600 gallon a minute well.
Yeah.
Wide enough, so that would, so you'd need public water if you have a fire suppression system.
Well, I don't think there's any public water on Bonsville Road.
There's not.
Yeah. Okay. Building A, I, I offer no comments there. Building B, the proposed approach presented in your memorandum takes us on a contractor path. All, all those work items identified there would need to be contracted out to, to complete those tasks. A mason would need to be, would be needed for the back wall stabilization. Contractor would be needed for the installation of a drain system, and Panoni would likely be needed to consult with regard to the design for that work. The creation of the south side knee wall with the permanent pedestrian barrier on the north side would also likely need to be contracted out. The one thing that I failed to mention last meeting was that the roof concept proposed by the volunteers provides stabilization of the walls without significant masonry work. So similar to what was done- So similar to what was done with building A, building C, those walls are stabilized by the frame that has been built within them, they're tied into the walls as well as supporting the roof. So that would reduce the amount of effort needed with regard to rebuilding or stabilizing the wall with, by a mason. The, the work for the, for the roof concept would be volunteer labor. Additionally, that roof would provide an upgrade for occupancy for building A. As I mentioned, we're currently limited to 20 people with a docent, and that's because there's one entrance and exit to that building. The roof would provide a second entrance exit. And it also supports occupancy for the first floor of building C. So you can imagine that the second floor of building C, as I mentioned, is level with a back trail, and that's where we would like the entrance for the volunteers at least to use it to supply materials. The next floor down is at an elevation consistent with the floor elevation of building A. So the connection between building and A, building A and building C would be between that first floor and, and building A. At this stage, we recommend that a, a vision for the roof over building B be maintained with further evaluation needed prior to the execution of the task. So I'd like to leave that on the table, realizing that we still need to give that some real attention and evaluation to make a decision on, on that work, task. Buildings D and E. It's recognized that the proposed roof over building D was not considered in the Route 2 Plan. However, the strategic plan is a forward-looking plan, and the need to protect the metal steamworks should be considered. So in our strategic plan, again, that is still very consistent with Route 2 master plan, putting a roof over building D is the one forward-looking item that was not in the Route 2 Plan. But that doesn't mean that it shouldn't possibly be considered. For building E, the Route 2 Plan offered an option of rehabilitation. It's also recognized, that, that plan also recognized that the steamworks, especially the boilers, were very historically significant as they were manufactured locally, right over in Coatesville. A visit from Spoon confirmed the historical significance of these steamworks, and it was their recommendation that they be covered as soon as we were able to prevent further deterioration of, of the metal. So if you recall, Spoon is the Society for the Preservation of Old Mills. It's a national organization, and the president of the Mid-Atlantic Region was actually out to visit with us that day. With regard to the recommended work tasks in this section of the memorandum, the south wall of building D is already down, and the other items will likely need to be contracted out. We recommend that the vision for the roof system over these buildings be maintained. Note that the, that with the park being included in the Bonsville Historic District for which we finally obtained a DOE, there is the real possibility of funding support for this work through the Keystone Grant. Once I have some clarity of the vision coming out of our conversations, I plan to have Megan McNish from the PHMC come out to talk about exactly what it is they can support with Keystone Grants. Restroom facilities, no argument, no argument there. We will likely not need something like what was proposed until sometime in the future, and we can reevaluate that need at that time. ADA access to building C. Subsequent to the September 5th meeting, we reviewed that area, and we think we have a solution to that issue. And mainly that issue was the concern about providing ADA access to the north side of building C. And that is that, that trail is drivable. Those that are handicapped could be allowed to drive up that trail, and we could install two or maybe three ADA parking spaces at the top of that hill close to building E. I don't know, if Luke, you can zoom in on that area.
On E?
Yeah. To, it would be just immediately to the east corner.
Of F, the parking lot of F?
Yeah. Up, up, you know, go back, go back to where we can see building E.
Okay.
Okay, so where the cursor is right now, up in that tree area there, off to the, off the north, or the east corner of the building there, there's space in the area at the top of the hill just off the trail where we could potentially install ADA parking spaces. So I wanted to address that. We may not need the elaborate ramp system that we had mentioned at the last meeting. The red trail. We still see a benefit of maintaining that section of the trail from the upper bridge down along the buildings, between the buildings and the creek. I know Luke has concern about tripping hazards. The guy wires for the utility poles are very well marked with, with rocks. There's, there's no chance that the wires will not be seen. Other than that, the hazards aren't any more significant than the other trails of the, of the park. They're natural, they're natural trails, there aren't even, there's rocks, there's roots. And there's a concern with regard to access to the eastern end of the park, coming into the park. Right now, most people that are going to hike the blue trail come in across that upper bridge and immediately turn right and follow the, the trail that leads to the blue trail and down along the creek. If we were to close that off, Luke suggesting that access to that area of the park could be done through the gardens. Now, I know that Sandy currently has a prohibition on dogs in the culvert garden, so that would, that would mean that those with dogs would not be able to easily access the east end of the park without going around the north side of the buildings and up and around. So I propose that we, we keep that section of the red trail between the, the buildings and the creek. I will also, also point out that Sandy, Sandy's crew has done a very nice job of putting plantings in along that trail, between the trail and the creek. It looks very nice back there. Repairium buffer in the picnic area. I, I think that's worth consideration. You know, as long as access to the creek can be maintained, you know, that's a big feature of this area. Now, families come in to use that picnic area, the kids go down to play in the creek, and I understand that what's, was done there with regard to the repairium buffer is not consistent with our, with our code. So perhaps we, we can do something to repair that, but also allow use of the picnic area as it, as it currently exists. And I agree with no additional gardens and turf areas. I think we're pretty much all agreed that we're, we're done with the additional gardens and whatnot, right? Okay. And then you have your general direction to the Bonsville Mill Committee. I agree with everything in this section, but I, but I have questions. The list of events. We generally agree with the merits of developing an annual list of events ahead of the new year, but we need to keep in mind that there needs to be a provision for ad hoc events, especially those geared towards the solicitation of donations to the park. So programs where we're, we're using them to promote donations to the park and financial support of the park, I think we need to have some flexibility for the addition of those into the year's programs. So to have a core list of, of programs well ahead of time, that makes a lot of sense, but I think there needs to be some flexibility to allow development of donations for financial Regarding the name of the parking amenities, that's looking forward, right? I mean, we're, we're, we've labeled the one acre garden in front of the buildings as culvert clearing, and I think that's pretty well set. I just want to confirm that we're not, we're looking forward as far as naming park amenities. Regarding the sunshine law, and that's the first I've heard that brought up with regard to Bonsville Mill Committee, I, I guess my question is, does that really apply to the Bonsville Mill Committee? I had always envisioned that requirement applying to commissions and, and boards of the township. I can't think of an instance where we've had a group large enough where we might have violated the sunshine laws, and I can't imagine that that would be much of an issue looking forward, but it's also not been on my radar, and I'd like to know whether that concern is real.
I, I can, I can speak to that. As a, as a body appointed by the Board of Supervisors to advise the board on the development of the park, the, the meetings of the Bonsville Mill Committee are public meetings, there are minutes taken, and it is subject to the, to the, to the sunshine law. Just, just by way of clarification, there is a lot of specialization in the tasks done by the committee, but if any of those subcommittees have a quorum of the original committee, that's what needs, that can't happen. So what, what is full membership? Are we at 15 on there?
We're at 15.
Okay, so if any subcommittee has a meeting of more than half of 15, then, then no.
I don't think we've had that issue. But it's something, now that you've highlighted it, I will certainly pay attention to. So going, going forward from this point, I guess I need to understand what our next steps are. We're, we're going to revise the strategic plan at some point to incorporate your direction. Shorter term than that, I would like to leave the meeting with the blessing to finish the north side of building C exterior allowing for occupancy, in other words, installing doors and windows in a way that's consistent with potential future use, and installing the flooring so that Rocky can get that out of storage and we can get it on, into the building. This is something they're willing to do, and it's, that's no cost to township. The other item for, for next year would be to complete the interior of building A. So those, those items I just summarized, I would like your blessing on to put into the Township Budget Committee as a scope of work with cost estimates, realizing that what we get from the township budget-wise for 2025 will be based on what you have available to us. But, but putting together a cost estimate with that work scope in mind, I would like your blessing on.
Well, flipping off of that, in order to put the floor down, what, what needs to be finished prior to the floor getting, I know you said it's free labor, but what needs to be finished on the...
I think the floors are ready for flooring now. Like, they, they could have been put in this year, but we didn't do that at Luke's direction.
The back wall finished?
Black wall is...
The back wall of...
The back wall, the north wall is covered in plywood.
Okay. So before you really want to put the floors down, don't you want to have the building finished exterior and, and all the windows and the tower done? I mean, the tower is kind of open right now.
The tower's been closed up. That will, that'll be closed up this year. So last week, they, they installed the lowest set of doors that are opening doors. The doors for the other openings will be installed and fixed in place, but they will, those openings will all be closed up.
Getting back to the floor...
Yeah.
The wall, the back wall and the access to, I guess what would be the second floor should be finished, correct, before any flooring goes down? I mean, in any job I've ever worked, flooring's the last thing to go down. So...
You want to come up and give your input? Okay. Arn, Arn Jensen, who's in the audience, acknowledge that...
Yeah, I mean, you know, from a construction...
Supports Francis's statement.
Sequence, you, you want to have the building tight.
Okay.
You've got heat in the building now, you have radiators on the second floor, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So you want that back wall completed, so you'll need that done, and you'll need the access to that before the flooring can go down.
I, I agree.
Okay.
If, if we...
Those things have to happen first, and then the floor will come sec, pretty much last.
Well, we can, we can make that all part of the, of the work scope, and we can, we can prioritize or sequence the, the work tasks accordingly.
And I guess getting back to the last, last meeting, it was trying to understand what those costs would entail. And obviously, we don't know what we're going to really use the building for, but in order to close it up, I mean, we have to know what's, what's it going to take for the back wall, what's it going to take for the windows and the remaining work and the access to that back, you know?
I think we have all the materials to do that.
I, I understand, but...
With, with the exception of the glass. I think we still have to actually purchase the glass for the windows.
We kind of got the cart ahead of the horse in a sense, where you're asking us to give you permission to proceed, but we don't know what we're agreeing to and what those costs possibly would be. And that's going to come at a later time through the Budget Committee.
Right, they made their presentation, I think, October 1st?
Right. I'm just look, I'm just looking for support for the, the scope of work that I've just mentioned, and we'll get into the details of, of the cost with the Budget Committee and whether they can supply the budget for that or not. But having just said that, the flooring is no cost, the, the north side exterior is no cost, you already have that material, the labor is being donated. So those costs are going to be very small. The only, the only thing that I'm aware of that we have not purchased material-wise is, is the glass for the windows.
So I guess...
For the entire building?
No.
Just for that back section?
The windows, the windows are installed in just about all the buildings. There's going to be several windows along that north side of the building at the trail level where there'll be window frames installed, the glass for that.
So I heard you say plywood is installed, but that's just plywood, no, no siding?
Right, and that's just to close up the building, keep kids from...
So, so I think at the very least, in order, short answer, we can't answer your question until we know what the costs are going to be to close up the back of the building, to get it watertight, and not just watertight, watertight 100% where...
Finished.
Finished, correct.
Finished.
Where it's got siding on it, glasses in, and it, and once we have those answers, then we can go ahead and give you permission to go ahead and put the floors down. But the problem is, we can't say start putting the floors down until we...
Okay.
Yeah, and in conjunction to that, you, you've got access coming into that second floor, so you have to define that access, because it's more or less going to be a bridge or a ramp connecting the upper, what I want to say, trailer road or service road that would span into that second floor area. I mean, it's...
There, there's going to be a ramp, and, and that is known, that it's been designed, the materials for that have been purchased. I guess what I'm looking for is a conceptual yay. It's, it's worth it for Rocky to spend the detailed effort of, of developing these cost estimates that we will be presenting to the Budget Committee on October 1st, and the, the Budget Committee can make a recommendation to the board.
Well, I can, I can sum it up in so many words. The township has a pot of money, and everybody's got their hands in a pot of money. We have to be careful, and so in other words, I don't want the, I don't want any committee to think that we can just double, triple what we've done in the past. It's never going to happen, it can't happen. We state this, we cannot as a board raise taxes haphazard. The number one complaint is when we approve projects. So we as a board have to be cognizant of what people outside of the committees... So we, as a board, have to be cognizant of what people outside of the committees are thinking. And it's, I'm not picking on Bonneville, I'm saying this for all committees. You had stated earlier that the, the Township Park gets more money than you guys get. The Township Park also has a thousand people in there every weekend. So it's like, if we stop doing stuff for the Township Park, we are from a thousand people. Why did you not do this?
I, I was talking about development costs of the, of the community park, not the annual budget for the community park, just to be clear.
I guess, I, I, I was expecting that after last meeting, that you would have put together some rough numbers for us to understand what, what we are considering here. And, and I guess that hasn't happened yet, because you're waiting for us to say, yeah, go ahead and do it. But we're waiting for you to say, this is what we think it's going to cost. And as a contractor, bids and, and budgets and, and opinions of costs are done on a daily basis. It shouldn't be that involved. I mean, we're not looking for every nail, we're just looking for a general idea, opinion of cost, so that we can say, okay, we've got this to consider. And yeah, I think we're, you can move forward, or eh, we really aren't feeling it, so.
And the floor seems, got excellent supervisors over here, both builders, I can't even get a word in. So, as a non-builder, you've got to understand, we were hoping that everything would get winterized this year. You still don't have a long-term strategic plan. It's, it's going to be a passive park, no matter what. You're, you're not, not going to have a thousand people there, or five hundred, or even a hundred on a weekend. So, putting the floor in is a whole separate issue. It's not tied to, it's not tied to anything. So I wouldn't be asking for the floor until I got the other stuff done that we asked you to do this time last year.
I guess what I, the way I'm looking at it is.
Which, well, let me just, which means, okay, come up with some costs and present it to the Budget Committee, who will present it to the supervisors. And, and let's see, and let's see where everything falls. But to ask us for permission now is, is, is difficult. You're asking us to make a decision in a total void.
Okay, I, let, let me word it a different way then. I, I ask for your support for the vision of finishing the exterior, the north side exterior, to accommodate future use. And the vision for getting rid of this flooring from storage. We'll put together a detailed cost estimate and work scope along those lines that we will review with the Budget Committee. And you can approve those costs or not approve those costs.
Well, it's not that, it's, it's kind of like mission creep. Every idea you have is a great idea, and the volunteers do tremendous work. But we still don't know where's that park going to be five years from now.
I, you know, I, I've heard Luke use that phrase many times, mission creep. And I honestly don't believe that there has been mission creep. We, we have been developing those buildings, we have been rehabilitating those buildings for use with, with the vision of the Retu Master Plan. And with the approval of the supervisors along that track several times along the way. So the, the township has supported moving along that rehabilitation, future use track for years now. And now there's being an adjustment made. So I, I'm asking for us to continue that vision of potential use, realizing that we need to do further evaluation as to whether that use is really needed. But any work on the building should be done in such a way as to not preclude the use.
What, what's, what's the plan to, for the remainder of the year, for the remainder of your 2024 budget? What was to be completed this year? On Bill, now, we're, we're mainly focused on Building C now.
Yep.
And, and the rest of it is, is truly up in the air with the vision. And, and as you saw, this memorandum that, that was delivered to you by Luke, we're, we're really not in, the township is not in the business of building museums or is doing historic restoration. That's above our pay grade. That's for the Department of Interior, for the federal parks. It's way above what we can handle.
Pennsylvania Museum Commission.
But let's focus on Building C now, and that's where we're at. And, and it's, it's, do we finish that, you know, in, in, in the way that you've described? Which is finish the back wall, finish the access to it, completely finish the exterior, and have a completely finished exterior of the building. Then you put your finishes in, which are the floor, correct?
Right, so the flooring, you, you can, you can move that down to the, the priority list of tasks.
Yes, because you've got some things that need to be completed way before you deal with the floor. But in any event, what was left this year?
They're, they're closing up the stair tower. There's a lot of work done on the stair tower this year. All of the windows were installed on the stair tower this year. They're in the process of, of installing the doors on the stair tower. That will all be closed up. The only question mark is exactly how the exterior of the north side of the building would be done. And frankly, that might be done now if we were allowed to, to move forward on that. We were directed not to do that.
Well, last year, we did ask that the Building C be completely winterized.
And, and that, that was.
That's the most important step.
That, that has been, you know, already budgeted, already approved, you know.
Luke directed us not to finish the north side of Building C with regard to potential.
I'm sorry, who directed you?
Luke.
I.
With you, with potential use.
Would clarify that you, we could argue about whether or not putting windows and doors is interior work or not. The, the budget direction was to do, to finish the exterior work on Building C. The, the committee's advice is, and we heard it earlier tonight in the presentation, that it makes no sense to put a blank wall on C when at a later date, there will be windows and doors on that blank wall of C. In light of that impasse, yeah, we haven't finished the north wall of Building C.
And, and, and the access to the second floor is not practical through that tower. Those stairs are not safe. They're rickety.
I, I agree.
But you, you have to have access to the back to that second floor.
So let's do it in a way that allows for occupancy.
That's really where, that, that's next step. And whether or not, you know, Luke's input, or if, if he wants to reconsider, you know, how do we proceed? If we're just going to stop, hard stop, brakes on, you know, and just go by this memorandum? Because that's, without, without getting the numbers from you, it doesn't seem as though we're going to just.
I, I can tell you that.
Approval and say, yeah, we're on board, let's go ahead and.
The numbers are not significant. I, I, I can tell you that because we already have most of the, of the material. I, Rocky has not gone to the effort of providing a detailed cost estimate for it.
You, you understand for, for the supervisors to approve something, we have to know what we're actually getting into now. Because what happens is you're spending money, and taxpayers are going to say, you're giving them the okay to do this, when you really didn't know what the costs were going to be. And now you're going down a rabbit hole with this thing. And that's, you know, obviously, our concern.
I.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you come up to the mic? Come up to the mic.
We have been the developer of most of our plans that we have done.
Come up here. Can't hear you.
And also, being able to get the lumber to better prices than you would normally go out and get. So that's why the flooring was bought a long time ago, because the future look at it was, we're going to use the building. Now, the backside of the building, all Rocky wanted was to know if there's going to be occupancy ten years from now, whatever. Whatever we are doing with that backside of the wall has to be done according to codes, according to.
Sure.
Everything so that we don't have to redo something down the line.
Yeah, no, I agree.
It means window height, door openings, whatever. So that's really what's at stake. We, we don't really need, I don't know how much money we need. I think we have most of the materials we need for, all of we need to do. But we just need to know that one fact. Is it down the line can be made ready for usage? May not happen, I don't know, it's.
We're, we're not asking you to commit funds tonight. What we're asking you to commit to is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What we're asking you to commit to is the vision for potential fu- future use of the building. And that, the additional work be done in accordance with that. And we'll put together a scope of work and a budget estimate for that and present to the Budget Committee on October first. And the, it, the expense would be approved then as part of the budget, or, or not. I, I'm just looking for support for the vision.
What, what is the, what is the Bonneville Mill Committee's vision for the usage? You're right, that's key, you have it truly.
Well, I, what I, what I, what I presented last week and, I mean, at the last meeting, where there's general usage for meetings and programs and things like that. We're at a watershed moment with the, with the dedication of this, this garden. We, we have our big dedication event October, October second.
Meetings for the Bonneville Mill, or meetings for, public meetings for, because now we're getting into having that.
It could be other organizations that use it.
Bathrooms and. A bathroom's going to cost a half a million dollars. There's, there's where the mission creep comes in.
Oh, we have, we have porta-johns, sir.
Please let me finish that. So you, we gave you permission to put the floor and not knowing what might happen. And Kyle's question is a very valid one. Even if, even if you had a meeting of Bonneville Mill people there, there, you're going to need a toilet. So even a self-contained toilet like we purchased for the park through a grant, that whole, that whole thing was, what, over four hundred thousand dollars? With the grading and everything else? I mean, and that's, that's got three toilets and a urinal. So, that's where the mission creep comes into. And we're really not in the business of museums and, and meeting halls. We, that's what we have here.
Well, we're using Building A now, and we have a porta-john there to meet the needs of the people that come to the park. We put in a second porta-john over by the new parking lot, that's ADA. So we have an ADA porta-john at the park now, and we have a porta-john over by the upper bridge now. Those will have to be the facilities that are used by.
But we'd never let anybody else in the township do that. It's just like the repairian buffer. That was, that was a bit of an error in, in violating the repairian buffer.
I don't, I don't argue with you there.
You can't say, well, we're the township, we can do anything we want. That, that's embarrassing to me. Well, I, I think at this point, um.
The Budget Committee.
Do you guys have any other?
I, I need to.
I don't, I, you know.
I just have one quick question.
Yeah.
What's the hot water for? You said we have hot water in that building?
Oh, it's, it's a hot water radiator system. It's not steam, it's, it's a hot water radiator system, yeah.
Hot water radiators.
In just Building C?
No, in A two.
And A two, too.
Yes.
Okay.
They're oil, oil boilers.
Oil, not propane?
No.
Thank you.
That was, not necessarily used specifically, but that was approved by the Board of Supervisors. So these, these were things that were done not willy-nilly, I mean, they, they were approved.
We understand. It's, we're just, we're trying to figure this out without really having.
Alan, did you want to come up and?
Financial information that would help us to say, okay, this is what we have, this is what we can approve to move forward with, I don't know.
So just one question from a Budget Committee perspective, I'd like to get your feedback on. So you're asking Jim to put together the cost estimates to present to, to our committee, which is great. My question is around the exterior wall that's facing what Jim's proposing would be Building B, having a roof over it. That is plywood today, so I just want to know, are you going to leave that as plywood? Do you want him to estimate finishing that wall?
Is that opening plywood there? I want it finished.
I thought. The wall between Building B and Building C is stone.
Right, yeah.
That's plywood.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, at this point, A number one goals are any buildings that are, that are not watertight on the exterior is.
Be completed?
Right.
Right.
Be completed, not just plywood.
That, that whole side.
Okay, so the north side as well as the west side.
Right. So the we- the west side building, I thought that was a stone gable going up.
There's, so.
Well, there is a stone gable there.
C is taller than the ruins of what is A and B.
Here's a big square opening.
At the top.
Now, is it plywood and tieback or just plywood?
I got you.
It's plywood.
Yeah, so, and we definitely got to get.
So you got to finish that with shingles or some type of finish on that, correct?
Okay.
Siding.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Yep, thank you.
All right, so to, to.
So we're going to put together a budget estimate to close up the north side of Building C, the west side of Building C without opening, the interior of Building A.
Correct.
For 2025.
Uh, it, it, may I make a, just a friendly amendment to that? The five-year plan, there's no time crisis, we can continue the dialogue. The budget for 2025 is a, a short-term affair.
Yeah, that's why I separated them, yeah.
Right. For clarity, the proposal for exterior finishes on A can include windows and doors.
C.
Yes.
On, on C.
On C.
You said A.
With glass.
Yeah.
Right.
The only, the only concern that I have is, you know, if you're finishing that back wall, then, and you don't prepare for that bridge to come into for access, then you're never going to get access to that second floor.
That's right.
The action is actually going to happen across concrete roots of the pump room. Stairway off and then.
All right, Arn, Arn, sorry. It, it has to be on the microphone, because otherwise it won't.
Sorry, the plan have always been to go walk across the concrete pad of the pump room, because that's a level with the floor. And then walk, make a door and walk in that way, a stairway out by the path.
Concrete pad is in place, I'm, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Arn Jensen.
Otto?
Arn.
Arn. Arn.
Whatever.
I'm sorry, Arn.
Arn has been involved with the park longer than I have.
Thank you, Arn.
He lives right across the street.
So you're saying that we already have in place?
No.
Pad or?
No, no, yeah, yeah.
He's misunderstanding your statement.
The roof.
He was talking about the wall facing Building A. As far as that opening needs to be prepared in such a way that it's.
Not Building A, Building C.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, because.
Facing Building.
We're talking about finishing Building C.
Yeah.
The exterior. And if you do that back wall and you finish it without planning to access it.
Exactly.
Then you'll never get access to.
But there will be access.
Okay.
The plan was, the pump room is, if you look at behind Building C, on this, there's an orange piece up there. That's the pump room.
He's not talking about the north side.
Yes, you are, aren't you?
You're talking about the west side.
I'm talking about the north side.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Of the building that's now plywood and.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's where you're going to be accessing second floor.
What's orange up there right now on the, on this picture, that's the roof of the pump room. That is a heavy concrete.
Yes.
Structure.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that.
We're planning on going across that to get into the building, because that's the height.
Okay.
Of that floor. Make a door there, there'll be access, and make a short step of stairs on the outside, on the path, by the path, so you can walk up there.
But the stairs won't give you access for handicap.
And we'll make a small ramp.
Okay. All right, so these are the things we need to understand, and we need to understand a cost related to that. And you can do a line item, you know, just, and, and then if we feel that it's not something we want to move forward, we can take that line item out. So if you, or if you do that, then we'll have a better understanding of what we're agreeing to. Does that make sense?
But this was just, just to clarify, that it is doable.
Okay.
Also without handicap access, just for mill people.
It would not have handicap access, which then at that point.
But, but you can.
It would, oh, it can.
It, it lies within the possibilities.
Okay. Well, we need to understand the cost for that with handicap access. Otherwise, the building just becomes a storage building.
Just put the ramp, just put the ramp on from the get-go.
Yeah. Or we can put a ramp on also right away, so.
I also want to be careful we don't continue.
I also wanna be careful we don't continue the mission creep. So I wanna know, well, what are the future plans?
Well, I mean, I think this is this is.
And that's that's part of what Luke was speaking to earlier, where he said the five-year plan is not dead in the water right now. We're just trying to wrap up something.
I mean, and even if I if I may, within the five-year plan, the proposed amendments to the five-year plan, at at no point did I hear from the board, and I didn't indicate in the memorandum, that interior finishes of C are off the table permanently. What appears in the memo is that they should not appear in the five-year plan. What I'm what I'm hearing as appropriate items for the budget request for next year would be finishing the north side of C and finishing the north side of C in such a way that that puts in windows and doors for future interior use of C. And the the interior work in next year's budget would be limited to A, the final repairs, the final interior finishes of A.
Well, I wouldn't continue with any interior until all exteriors are closed up to what what has.
Well, A is A is closed up.
I mean, we're we're in Building C.
But I, hold on, sorry.
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I understand A, but that was just a line item ask for for continuing to finish the inside of A. Forget A. Finish outsides of others first. Plywood is not su- not not a susceptible closure. It has to be tied back to the very least. And even that's only gonna last a year or two.
I'm I'm just gonna say this as an overview. And I, there's a lot of ways to tell the story and the history of of a site. And to me, restoring it is not a practical way to do it. I would have done Building A period. That would have been the welcoming center and education center. And nothing else would have gotten finished here, other than stabilize it, make it safe. And then plaques could go up to show the steam generation. We all know we all know the succession of energy, water, steam, coal. Everyone understands that. But now we're in this. We're kinda in this now. So we have to get it to a point where we're, you know, it's not gonna be a total waste. And that, I'm just being very frank with you.
I'll close with, there has not been mission creep on this. There there truly hasn't. We've been working on this for rehabilitation and towards occupancy for a long time now. And several members have been on the board over that period of time. HUD was at the front end of this thing when we actually purchased the park and developed the the master plan and and created the the Bonneville Mill Park Committee. The the vision has been consistent, especially since we've had Rocky on board and we've been able to realize the significant cost savings of the rehabilitation approach. And we have been on that rehabilitation track since 2012. And we've been consistent about it. And we've gotten approvals from the township to do this work. This is not.
I understand. I understand. Understand how you got here, Jim. We understand that. We understand that. But I I'm just expressing that there's a lot of ways to showcase this site, other than burdening the future of this township taxpayers. So, you know, and I'll give you an example. The entire village of Marshallton is demonstrated in a little heritage center built behind the Four Dogs Tavern. It's an interactive demonstration. You walk in there and you push buttons of kiosks, you push buttons. It tells you the story. It's amazing. It's wonderful. So.
But there's been a significant amount of rehabilitation and restoration throughout that entire village.
Privately.
Privately, yes.
Privately.
Uh, not not the.
Privately.
The tavern down at the end?
Capping stones.
Well, that won't.
I mean, we're not, they're not building a factory here. So let's be realistic. Let's be practical.
There's the steamworks are unique, that they're still there is unique, that people that are being born today have no concept of how that power system worked. It's a story that can be told.
For the Department of Interior.
It's something that is historically significant. It's been identified as such in the mature master plan.
They don't even teach in schools anymore, so they don't care. They don't. They don't. They don't even teach American history in school to the.
Well, that's a shame. Well, that's 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 the opportunity that we we need to take this opportunity to provide that.
All right, I'm gonna cut you short here. So we we have we have our direction. If you can get that for the budget meeting, and then obviously, we gave you the input on on the exteriors, wrapping up those right now. But at this juncture, I'm gonna I'm gonna close this session because we we have put over two hours into this in the last two meetings. We do have other items tonight, not to mention.
I appreciate that. I I and I do appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate your input.
Thank you, guys. All right.
I understand. And that's that's a definite concern as well.
All right, Luke, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the timber ordinance concerns.
Yeah, thank you. In East Brandywine Township, our woodland protection and logging standards are contained in the supplemental regulations section of our zoning code. This code was last revised in November of 2018. A landowner has submitted an application for a logging operation, which has been denied by our zoning officer. The zoning officer's letter is in your packet. The applicant has provided a fact sheet from the PA Sustainable Forestry Initiative, which in turn references a letter from the Pennsylvania Attorney General Office to East Brandywine Township dated December 21, 2018. Both of these documents are also in your packet. Both documents generally support the applicant's claim that elements of our existing code are not inconsistent with the PA Acre Act of 2005.
That's the Penn State study.
Just by way of a single regula- go ahead.
I know. Luke, could you tell us where in our packet you're you?
Okay, so there are, I I have at this point referred to.
The arrow.
Yeah, I've referred to three documents, and I will refer to four by the time I'm done. The the arrow letter is the zoning officer's review of the application and denial of the permit. That has the blue arrowhead and says arrow on it.
Gotcha.
The PA Sustainable Forestry Initiative Inclusion is the fact sheet that has a green logo in the top left. And the the Attorney General's letter is actually stapled to the arrow letter. If you go to the end of the arrow letter, you will see a letter that that is on Pennsylvania State Government Letterhead from the Office of Then Attorney General Josh Shapiro dated December 21, 2018. So by way of a, I I'm not gonna focus on all the parts that the applicant says are inconsistent with the Acre Act. I'm gonna use as an example a single regulatory element. Our ordinance requires of the the removal of the slash from the logging site. Slash is the material that's left behind from a logging operation, the tops of trees and the branches that are not used for lumber. Our ordinance calls for this material to either be hauled off of a site or turned into mulch and be spread evenly over the site where the logging occurred. The PA Auditor General, the auditors, I'm sorry, the PA Attorney General's Office letter states that this requirement to remove slash is both a violation of state law and inconsistent with best practices as described by the Pennsylvania State University Extension Office. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, the township's ordinance task force was working on a revised logging ordinance, using the Brandywine Conservancy as a consultant and in communication with the Attorney General's Office. I understand at no point in that process did a draft of ours get Attorney General Office approval. Quite to the contrary, if there's a passage in the December 2018 letter from the Attorney General Office that reads instead, "I respectfully submit that the shortcomings in the township's timber harvesting ordinances are numerous. Trying to change each one of the specific shortcomings would be time and resource-heavy and ultimately result in a confusing ordinance that gives owners/loggers little guidance on what actions are permissible or what the township requires of them. The Office of the Attorney General respectfully submits that instead of trying to cut around the edges of a fatally flawed ordinance, the township adopt the Pennsylvania State University PA Model Forestry Regulations." That's the fourth thing I referred to in your packet. So that model ordinance is in your packet. "In light of a current application and the the concerns raised by the applicant about our denial, I would respectfully ask the board to authorize me to work with the Planning Commission to prepare a version of the Pennsylvania State University Model Ordinance for incorporation into the township's code, and that I advise the current applicant that the township is working on doing so."
When you say version, would we not just simply adopt what Penn State has out there?
It it is interesting when you get into the details. Let me just use an example. The model ordinance has a section called definitions. In East Brandywine Township's code, all definitions exist in a one location. We don't have definitions in each chapter of our code. There's just one location that has consolidated definitions. So some work would be necessary to convert the model ordinance into something that works. So there's, even if we're using as a model, there's still points of discretion. Also in the model ordinance, there are things like the township shall be given blank days' notice. How many days? I I think that the the Planning Commission is best positioned to advise the board on that.
Yeah, I if I may, I talked very briefly with Luke about this. I've been involved in three of these, two in other townships. And I think before the board makes a decision, perhaps we'll talk about it in the executive session. Because I think you need to consider practical results on the ground if you adopt a model ordinance. Pennsylvania is an agricultural state. Penn State is an grant institution. It's supportive of Pennsylvania agriculture. So the model ordinance is not meant to protect the township's interests. I'll just put it that way. So I think you have to consider those things. Now, part of it, you know, Rob Willig is the guy in charge up there, the Attorney General. And he more or less said in his letter, he doesn't have the time or resources to review a township, adopt a model ordinance. And and it may be fine, but I think you need to, before you make any decision, I think we can still tell the applicant that we're we're trying to resolve any issues which violate acre. But I'm reluctant to advise you to just tell the Planning Commission, work on the model ordinance. I'm sorry to say that, Luke, but.
Well, would you be able to advise, you know, I guess, parts of the model ordinance that you have concerns about at some point?
Well, I mean, I'm not.
I mean, based on your experience and what you've dealt with in in other municipalities.
I can point you to a site where the township said they didn't wanna fight the battle. And so they said, okay, just timber it under the model ordinance. And you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can I say? Go ahead, Francis.
No, no.
All right, is there something to be done quickly? I don't wanna be sitting here a year from now talking about it.
I mean, the quickest way to do it is just to adopt the model ordinance.
No, I I no, I think it's a good.
What I'm suggesting to you, I think we need to understand.
I agree with your suggestion. We need to review the model ordinance and look at how applies to East Brandywine. But I don't want it to go on more than ninety days.
Understood.
Well, why don't we, why don't we?
And we can, because it's real estate related, we can do it in a.
Well, we have we have threatened litigation against the past.
Okay, so we do it in an executive session and and pass it on to the Planning Commission then. That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
It's ready to really review.
I I have a file of lots of stuff from our discussions.
And we talked about that at length. And the Brandywine Conservancy developed their own model ordinance, obviously is more being towards conservation. And at one time, I was told that there's another model ordinance to be looked at.
You should be able to find or confirm that, in fact, right?
Well, we should be able to. The guy who developed it is now retired. We we can, I can see what I can find out.
Okay.
But I I do have to say, I mean, I'm not an expert on timber harvest. So for me to say, well, this is gonna be a problem in the model ordinance, that's difficult for me.
I think you're gonna find a problem either either direction, to be honest with you. I think every side will find a problem with it.
Here's the thing that always jumps out at me is we we go through all the lengths to protect and preserve, and Pico comes down the road and cuts down every single specimen tree they want.
They have the right to do that in state law.
I'm looking at some of these trees they took down his last go-around in the township. And I'm like, why did they take that down?
Or the way that they prune.
Oh, yeah.
You know, half a tree up, half a tree down.
So I don't know.
All right, I'll make a motion that we move the timber ordinance review to an executive session because of the potential litigation. And that we have that executive session as soon as we can schedule it.
Yep, and I'll leave that up to Luke and and Tom to decide.
I'll second that.
And I'll leave that up to Luke and Tom to decide the the next executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Luke, you might as well keep going.
Yeah, well, this last one is very simple. We are required before September 30th of each year to report to a governing body what the minimum municipal obligation for the township's pension plans will be in the coming year. Greatly appreciative to help the chief in preparing this. The two obligations that will be due before December 31st of 2025 for the non-uniformed pension plan will be $73,178. And for the uniformed pension plan, that same figure will be $247,141.
Is 25 the right date and not 24?
Correct. So what you use is a best estimate of the remaining payroll in the current year to guide your contributions in the next year. The timing has to do with budget preparations for next year. I I'll say, in turn, just as a fiscal note, these amounts are deferred by state pension aid or are defrayed in part by state pension aid.
Okay. This is not 100% of.
Right. Generally, state pension aid pays 100% of the of the non-uniformed MMO and a bit of the police. That's it. It doesn't need to be accepted. It just needs to be announced. So information item, correct?
Thank you.
Consider the requirement satisfied.
All right, we don't have any ordinances for consideration tonight. Public comment on any agenda items.
You wanna make some up?
Yeah, no. Public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none in the audience, we're gonna move on to notices. There was an executive session held by the board prior to the September 5th meeting. And that was to discuss real estate personnel matters. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.